Board of County Commissioners, last session.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones should lead us in prayer and pledge, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. We ask that you would be with us in all our discussions, not just us here, but all of us here in this building this morning, God, in this place, as meeting place. Thank you for discretion and understanding today. Thank you above and beyond all for knowledge and discernment. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masser, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. Next on the agenda will be the payments of the county bills.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously. Public comments? Public comments. Come on up, ma'am. Give me your name for the record.
For the record, Barbara Roars, Lanark Village. I'm here today with the residents of Lanark Village to talk to the commissioners, to petition the commission, to see if it's either a law or an ordinance, we're not really sure how it's listed, for the speed bumps and the speeding issue that we have in Lanark. I brought you all some pictures, and of course, the first picture is the one that when we had installed the speed bumps. When the speed bumps were put in, our speeding problem stopped immediately. We had, I mean, Lanark is such a congested area, and we just had our neighbor's dog get killed, and it really upset everybody. But if you look at the picture where you can see the van and the vehicle, that is me trying to back out of my parking space. You cannot see the other one, which is the white truck, and I'm in my car, I cannot see. And when somebody's coming down the road doing thirty-five, forty miles an hour, I really feel like I'm risking myself and my car. I used to depend upon my neighbor that lived on the N unit there to use the reflection off of her windows, but she's changed her drapery, so I can't see anymore. So as you can see, between the parking and the speeding, it is a very, very big problem. When we put the speed bumps in, we mostly did it to see what the reaction from our community was going to be. If they didn't like them, we were going to just take them up and send them back. But everybody, everybody was very pleased that we have them. When we did our petition, we did this petition in about a week and a half was the amount of time. It was very hot, we probably would've gotten more signatures, but every person that we spoke to gladly signed the petition for us, gladly. Some of the people are just neighboring people who drive through the village and things of that nature, but most of them, you'll see that they are from, and I tried to do the petition in sections so that you could see how many people from that section agreed with having the speed bumps. I was really amazed, even when I get into the back on Warren Street, Newman, all the way over to Collins, people were just really, and then one lady says, "Please don't forget Pine Street." So we all know that it's a problem all through the village. I had a lady that I was talking to tell me that people will go down Appalachia, Appalachia Street, or I'm not sure the other street name, I don't remember it. But anyway, they go back there, and then they will hit Oak Street, and they're doing fifty-five and sixty miles an hour down Oak Street. It's a drag race in the evening, and later into the night, it gets even worse, to my understanding. I'm not a night person, so I'm not really out. But, you know, one lady that I had spoken to was telling me about her handicapped challenged daughter, who is thirty-three years old, but her mind capacity is of a three-year-old to a five-year-old, and would not know not to go out in the street. So we not only have elderly people who are a little hard of hearing, some people don't see well, we don't move well, I don't, and, you know, when your car is backed all the way to the edge of the road because of the parking situations that we have, you can't, I'm not a person, I will not walk through somebody's yard, so I will walk around my car. And there's times, if I'm getting something out of the trunk of my car, I literally have to move over for somebody coming through. I try walking my dog, and I still have the same problem with my dog. But I understand that the county objects to the speed bumps. We would like to be put onto the agenda to speak with the engineer and possibly with DOT, to see if we could have something done. Nothing is working. I mean, everybody knows the speed limit is fifteen, and twenty, I think maybe twenty-five, but nobody does it. Anyway, if we can, we would like to have further discussion. A lot of people in Lanark would like to see this to be completed. Okay?
Do you have a petition?
Yes, I gave.
The clerk has, you already had to give this one, yeah? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, hey, good morning. I'd like to charge our county coordinator to look into this issue and give us a plan of care, and also link Alligator Point speeding issues, signage issues there. That is another dysfunction that needs to be considered, and since we're looking at the two neighborhoods, we can link maybe the same project together. And I'd like to ask our county coordinator to begin that process.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the board policy forces you don't take action during public comment, but in terms of a commissioner directed the staff to look into this and report back to the commissioner, certainly appropriate.
That was appropriate, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next, uh, next public comment.
Morning, gentlemen. My name is Chris Langston. Today, I'm for you, I'd like for one of you to make a motion for me to get on the following agenda. I'd like to talk, readdress the health of the bay and some of the ideas that we've got at kind of restoring some of the problems that are currently affecting the Appalachia Cola Bay. I'm not going to go in much detail today because I don't have the time, but that's the reason why I'm really up here requesting one of you to make a motion to put me on the agenda for the following meeting, that way I can go into greater detail of what the proposal is.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know we have a good procedure for doing this to honor the good work that you're working and wanting to present to us, and I'd like to ask you to coordinate with our county coordinator in preparation for the potential of being on the agenda, supplying him with the data and so on, and let him, if you will.
For the next meeting.
Maintain, well, he'll make that determination consultation with us so that we're up to speed, and we're educated on the good work you're doing there, and our county coordinator will help facilitate a decision on being on the agenda.
Mike, what are you going to need from me?
I'll give you a call.
That'll work.
That'll be the procedure.
Yeah, I'll thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments?
Gordon Hunter, District One. Just want to report, we had an organizing meeting with the friends of the airport last Saturday, and it was very successful, and we set up about six different committees to do different things of outreach in the community. We had kind of a fun time, too. We had two pilots who soloed for the first time, and we went through a little ceremony for them, kind of a military tradition of cutting their ties off, and we'll post it on a corkboard on the airport, and it was covered by David in the paper, so we hope it'll be an article in the air maybe this week. It's really a lot of fun and well appreciated. First solo pilots, two of them, we've had, one of them, young man Chance White, is one of the recipients of the thousand-dollar scholarships that were given by Centric Aviation last week. So he's developed his interest in aviation, he's soloed as a pilot, and he's continuing on to pursue an aviation career, so good things are happening in that area. We formed six different committees, and one of the committees, we're already getting some good action on, that is our historical committee. We've been in contact with Camp Gordon Johnston, and they have actually donated some artifacts for us, a flight jacket, pilot helmet, used during the training of World War II at the field, so we're going to have a lot of fun with this. We're going to establish a kind of a museum and a display case at the airport, and it should be a lot of fun. I just want to let you know that we're here as a citizens group to volunteer to help, to support the airport, and we hope that we can accomplish some great things in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public comment? Next on the agenda, be Department Director, report, Mr. Howard Nevel, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners, how y'all doing?
Good morning.
Got a couple items on the grass cut, and we continue on cutting grass, which right now is very hot, so, you know, we're doing the best we could do. We've been getting some calls about some grass that's grown up through the county, but we're just doing it like we've always done it, make a path through, then we'll start back over, but we will get it. And on the motor grader, we demoed three different motor graders, which we got the third one now, so I should have something at the next meeting on the motor grader.
Y'all trying them out?
Yes, sir, trying them out, three different ones, so.
Is it a single or a double?
Sorry?
Motor grader?
Yeah, the motor grader, it's a big grader with a big blade.
Oh, the grader?
Yes, sir.
They're going to do the roads?
Yeah, well, the one we got now is about fifteen, sixteen years old, and it's pretty old, so any time, we've spent a lot of money on it, so.
Yeah, you need a new one.
So we're going to trade that one in, I think, I think they're going to give us forty thousand for the one we got, so that will be a down payment on the new one, so.
We trying different models out, is that what you're doing?
Yes, sir, different, well, the same CAD, just different models, bigger, smaller, functional, medium-sized grader, so, yes, sir.
Well, we're going to leave that to your category, because you know which one.
Yes, sir.
That we need in the county.
Right.
That's going to help you the most.
Which we should get in, you know, fifteen, twenty years, we should be good, so.
Oh, we do. I'm surprised they're giving that much for that one that old.
Yes, sir.
You've been taking good care of it.
Yeah. You'll take good care of it, and agree to keep the old chain, keep maintenance up on it, so.
And you've got, we've got money in your savings account for that.
Yeah, we're going to get up with air, yeah, on the maintenance, yeah, but for the new motor grader, we're going to get up with air and see if we can work something out, so.
Howard does have some payment funds available because he didn't actually pay off one of his other pieces of equipment.
Yeah.
Good.
If it ever need tearing up, come get me, and I'll drive it.
Oh, boy. Come get you. That would be a photo op, wouldn't it? Imagine, you could rip, you can rip some stuff up with it.
I bet you so. What, you got anything else?
Are y'all on the signs? We got some different signs, which people have been on vacation, on the signs and stuff, and they're supposed to be back Monday, so we can get on that, and they can make the signs and stuff we need. I think some Appalachia Island, East Point, so.
How you painting, I mean, coming up?
The what?
The painting, the, you know, the sign?
Yeah, we got all we need, and all we got to do is just get the gas bottles for it, and he's going to come back down, the guy, and kind of show us some more about it, so. Yeah, we got all that in there, on the paint and stuff.
Okay.
Good on that.
What kind of bottle you, what kind of bottle they got there?
It's like gas bottles.
Oh, just a regular?
Regular, bigger, you need two, the smaller ones freeze up, so you got to, you know, get the bigger gas bottle with that type of work, so.
Okay.
Keep it freezing up.
So you're burning that paint onto the road with LP gas system?
Yeah, so heat it, heat it, then cool it, once you heat it good on that road, and put some cold water and stuff on it, and then you can move on to the next one. You can make the crossbars or whatever, about twenty minutes to move on with the paint, you got to sit there about four hours, three and a half to four hours, so.
I ain't trying to get in your check on you or nothing, but once you in my area doing one, let me.
I will.
I just want to see how it goes.
Okay. Wish you'll do it.
Yeah.
It's amazing how it works, so, stuff just melt right into the pavement.
Okay.
And it's DOT certified, so, all good, so.
Okay. Anybody got anything from the house, with the neighbors?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I do, Commissioner, a couple of items, and Pam might want to chime in on the second one. Item number seven on my report, the Florida Department of Transportation notified the county that due to additional funds being appropriated by the legislature, they are accepting two additional SCOP and scrap applications at this time. The deadline is July fifteenth. Based on the criteria for each program, it is suggested that the two SCOP applications be, one, repairs to the Timber Island Bridge and Highway sixty-seven Bridge over Crooked River, and two, paving the unpaved portion of Mill Road that was cut from the former project due to lack of funds. The one identified scrap project is to complete the widening and paving of Highway sixty-seven. We have not identified another potential scrap application at this time. Board action to authorize the middle of the SCOP and scrap applications.
Second. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masser.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on that?
I've got to ask a question, please, Mr. Chairman. Michael, I need to talk with one of y'all, or maybe later.
Mm-hmm.
So do we have another scrap that we can apply for? We just don't have anyone identified?
We don't have one identified, we still have open slots, if that's what you want.
Well, I don't know if it'll qualify for scrap, but I have another I want to talk to you about.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And I'll get with Mark.
Mark, after the meeting, you get with us.
Yeah.
And we'll hold Clay back to a bit.
All right. I didn't catch that when I was reading through it, I'm sorry.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously.
Okay, item number eight, one Pam might want to chime in on, it was learned from the Florida Department of Transportation that there might be funds available through the federal highway administration to repair the hurricane damage to CR-30A west of Appalachia Cola. These funds are available because CR-30A is a federal aid road, who knew that. Board action to authorize the county engineers to prepare the detailed damage inspection report on the damaged sections of road and submit it to FDOT. So I know Pam had filed FEMA, if I'm not, yeah. What we were told from Dustin at FDOT is that FEMA is going to have to reject that, that the only way this road could and should be funded is through this, the federal highway administration, so just to let you all know.
Go ahead.
Michael, we had a project to do this whole road from the wide of thirteen mile. That doesn't interfere, this is just hurricane damage on the two spots that were washed out.
And Clay could correct me if I'm wrong, I think, it's just the changing the matting on the side to protect the road, this is actually a project for the road. For the record, Clay Kennedy.
Clay Kennedy with Dewberry. You're correct, Commissioner, there is a, and I think y'all have got it out for advertisement for RFPs, for engineering, that takes care of that section, and when Mark called me about the SCOP and scrap additional applications, we were talking about bridges that could be done, and I told him at that point, I said, "There's two washout areas on C-30 that whatever engineering firm gets that design, they're going to have to take that into account." So can we get that as part of some additional funding? That's when it got brought up, that it was, FEMA wouldn't be able to pay for that, it would have to come under the federal highways stuff, so that's what we're trying to do, is just make sure that someone's paying for this other than Franklin County.
Those two washed out areas?
Yes. That were, that were hurricane damage, you were correct in that, they were.
The other project will continue on, though, I mean, we'll still get to pave that road, just these two areas will be fixed by a different pot of money.
They'll still get to pave that road, but there's going to have to be something engineering safety-wise, because there's really not a shoulder, an adequate shoulder, I should say, on those two stretches.
So basically, this should be two different pots of money fixing that road?
Ideally, yes, sir.
Okay.
I can't promise that that's how it's going to come funded, you know, that one's going to come in conjunction with the other.
Clay, let me ask this question, and not bringing up any scary thoughts about the project in ninety-eight right now. Should they fix the washed-out shoulder to protect the road before we pave it? Because that's what Anderson Construction is saying is it's taking so long.
Over here on this side.
You're talking about the stretch between Car, East Point, Carbel?
The two points that are washed out, shouldn't we fix?
I would think so, I mean, anytime you can do shoulder work.
Yes.
Before you put down a finished mat of asphalt, that would be wise.
Be ideal. So as y'all communicate with DOT, relay that to them, and see if we can't get that done, but I just don't want to stop the whole paving project for these two places. We're going to fix these two places out of federal aid money, and then we're going to continue with that project that we've already got slated.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What I seen was, I mean, the other, that would slow them down, but I seen them other companies done the same work, and they moved real fast.
Yeah.
But they was on this, maybe it wasn't that much damage like we have, but they were putting down mats, digging big holes, and putting down, I guess, the foundation or whatever you call it, they went on right through it. These young people, they have been messing around since last year.
With the engineers' comments, I'll make a motion to proceed on number eight.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously.
And I'll send Pam whatever they tell us, the highway administration, okay, reference funding for this one. Thank you. All right.
Anything else, y'all?
Anybody else got a thing for Mr. Howard? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Fulner Davis, solid waste director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just a couple of items for your information, few items, in the solid waste area, we have a fire going on right now at the landfill. It's the moats from the storm that was staged inside the landfill, and it's, what it's doing is smoldering right now. We got it contained with the help of the forestry. DEP has been notified, they come down and checked us out, and I was just told to give them, keep an update. Fire department did come out, put some water on it, about like putting gas on it, really. The next thing is for is the transportation, I don't know if any of you heard, got some complaints, I know Commissioner Jones, we're backed up, we're hauling the garbage out of the county right now, and the reason is that the hauler, Rich's Freight, lost a box, caused damage, severe damage to his trailer, and also messed the truck up and route. But anyway, he bought a used trailer, trying to get back on, he's been having a problem with it. We also called other haulers in, trying to get caught up, but, you know, it spurred the moment, so it's just, we behind right now, so if you any help, you get in the call, that's the reason.
You got an idea how long it'll be done like that?
Well, he, hopefully we'll get back on track tomorrow. The trailer, the used trailer he bought is, he made a load yesterday, had a flat tire on it, so it put him back, he normally make three loads a day. We have six boxes, one got damaged, so we're down to five boxes now. We in the check, process of checking with his insurance to see if it's going to cover our box.
So we'll be all right, you know, about a call, we can just tell them, he should be back working in about a week.
Yes. We got area rolled off that's available full with garbage, area knuckle boom full with garbage, so we're trying to accommodate the people as they come in, so a little slow. The next thing is, I don't know if you heard or not, we had a power knuckle boom driver knocked down about two light poles, left his boom up, but he was safe, thank God, everything is all right, people back up, that was early part of last week. And the last thing for is parts and wreck, the dune walkovers repairs, the temporary repairs should get started today.
Excuse me? How long it gonna take, they say it gonna take them a little bit?
Roughly two days per dune walkover.
I rode over to the island the weekend, every dune walkover over there was full.
Yes.
They could find a place to park, it was full, every one of them.
Yeah.
From one end of the island to the other, so there's those dune walkovers are being used excessively right now, so.
Okay.
Just public information, they, they use them.
Right.
Our little baseball team's doing very well.
That's right, Commissioner, you're right about that. We got one down in Seaborn, Florida, right now. They are, they will advance to World Series, they'll play again today to determine whether they'll be first place or second place in state, but either way, they will advance to World Series.
So Seaborn's double A, right?
Triple.
Is it triple A?
Yeah, that's triple A, picture machine.
Okay.
Good.
Was that fire that you're talking about spontaneous combustion, it just, is that?
Yeah, you can say that, because it's, I mean, it's nothing, it's just from being packed so tight, just burning from up on the heat, and that's the reason why the fire department can't really help us, I mean, they willing to, they come out, but it's, just take time.
And water just scattered it, is that the idea, was the pressure and?
Say that again, Commissioner.
Water did not help, you say it just?
No, no, it'll take a lot of water.
I see.
And to stay with it.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. The only other way, I meant, we could spread it, but we don't have the land.
Yeah.
To spread it and wet it down as we doing it, so, but DEP recommended just keep a close eye on it, and let it work its course.
That happens all over the country, never kill piles catching a fire?
Right.
They separated, they put a separation on the fire?
No, no, it went around, the forest had cut a trench around it.
You did.
Yeah. And we've been on fire watch, so, yeah.
And I guess when that's all burning down, that's really ultimately a good thing for you, because you'll have more room to put more chips at that point, is that the idea? And the product maybe is fertilizer, isn't it? It's burned out there in that ash.
Once it burn out, it's, it burn out.
It's gone.
And I think what's happening, a lot of dirt is mixed in with the moats.
I see.
That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, as he's coming, I want to just say something that maybe I know that you, all the rest of you may not know, talking to Mr. Richards, that the problem we have with his truck, it actually was a factory defect on that, on that, the part of his truck, some of the welds broke, that's what let that box come off while he was going down the road, so. It wasn't through no fault of his own, it's just, you know, trying to catch up and trying to get everything back going, and I know that because I was putting some hydraulic hoses together for him about eight-thirty Sunday night, so he could keep working, so, that's how I know.
Good. If I may, sir. Item number two on my report, the county's insurance carriers handling the replacement of the roof at Weems Memorial Hospital. In order to stay within insurance limitations for the repair, it would be beneficial for the county to allow for the debris from the demolition of the existing damaged roof to be accepted by the landfill without the assessment of tipping fees, as this is a county-owned building. Board action to agree to waive the tipping fees for the storm-related roof demolition debris from the county-owned Weems Memorial Hospital. In the audience, I'm going to ask him to come up to the podium there, Mr. Keith Bassett, he's with Senator, he's the insurance company's representative for the project of replacing the roof at the, at Weems Memorial Hospital. You're going to, when they ask you to speak, speak your name for the record.
My name's Keith Bassett. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Do you think we wanted to get off? You want to go across the landfill?
Tipping fee? Yeah. The tipping fee, that's what he's asking.
Let's get that on, and then I'm going to make it quick.
Second.
In a sec.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That pass you know, nor, nor opposed.
That's good, that's good.
Thank you.
Wait a minute.
You wanna tell us about the roof?
Come on, oh, give, give us a little information on that roof, on.
What would you like to know?
I think he's asking for a status update where we are.
Where we are, how long it gonna take?
Okay, so we've, we sent out the roof to bid, we've gotten the bids back, we reviewed them and have awarded the contract for the roof. We've also awarded a contract for interior protection, because the whole substrate of the roof is gonna have to come off and a new one will go on. Right now, trying to work with the hospital CEO on a temporary facility, that's been a process in getting them on board with moving the hospital into a temporary facilities, which will make it safer, uh, for patients and staff at the hospital while we're doing the roof project. Uh, we've worked late yesterday trying to get the design finalized and now currently, uh, trying to get approval from AKA and what they need to allow the temporary facility to be utilized during the roof project.
You know, this roof, this happened during the storm, right?
Yes, sir.
And we back in storm season again.
Yes, sir.
This roof should be fixed, should've been fixed, I mean.
Initially, we were-
What, what, what's y'all, you say y'all can do what now for, to, to keep from interrupting the patients and stuff, what, what, how you see it that?
We're gonna bring in a temporary medical facility that'll have ER and, um, for the nurses and doctors and, uh, x-ray, ultrasound, all that stuff go into this temporary facility, so that we can work quicker on the new roof, re-roof project.
Had that ever been used before?
The temporary medical facility? Yes, sir, it has.
And it, it won't put, it won't put none of our people at home, we, I mean, it?
No, sir.
It'll, it'll do the job, what, huh, what they doing that?
Yes, sir.
And how long, how long you think you gonna take y'all to do that roof?
Looking at total project from start finish, about ninety days.
We need to tell them people, what can we do to, um, with the lawyer? We need to get this roof figured, I mean, we back in, we in another hurricane season, they been messing around, the roof should've been fixed, in my eyes, it, to me. I'm just one commissioner, but I think that roofs, stuff like that should've been took care of. And, uh, what can we do to beat up this process?
Well, I think, sorry, I forgot to, Mr. Barrett?
Bassett.
Bassett, well, we got Bassett.
Close. Mr. Bassett's indicated that they're still going through a process of checking with AKA to make sure that this temporary facility will be AKA approved. I'm assuming that part of that process is to make sure that the temporary relocation does not endanger your critical access designation, so we need to check on those two items. But assuming that this is AKA approved and it doesn't endanger your critical access designation, then I think it's within the discretion of the board, uh, to make the final decision as to how you want to proceed with the roof replacement. I mean, you are the elected officials, it is your building and ultimately you're responsible for the decisions that are made on how it's, uh, maintained and repaired. Now, you typically do that through your designees, which is Mr. Moron, and also through your hospital CEO, but ultimately the decision power or decision-making authority rests with you. So I say, you need to get the information back from AKA on those two questions and then make a decision from there, but this, this, this is kinda premature, I guess, in a way to make a decision until you know what AKA's going to say. Do we have any update on when you're expecting AKA to make a decision?
We were on the phone with him out there just now, they're talking two weeks and I told him that we needed an answer sooner than that, that I needed to know exactly what he needed and I would get that to him. And told him I needed an answer before then, that that wasn't acceptable from them, when I got a hospital that's missing part of a roof.
Okay, well, in that case, if AKA's going to return an answer back before your next board meeting, then assuming it's the board's desire to have the temporary facility just to prove it conditioned on AKA approval for the temporary facility and that your critical access designation will not be endangered by the temporary relocation of the hospital. But the reason I say this, cause your critical access designation requires that you not change the location of the hospital. I personally have a hard time thinking that relocating to the front yard would be considered a problem, but that's really something for the bureaucrats in Tallahassee to make the decision on, not us. Those are my thoughts, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, well, I got two more things, then, then I might move, let, let's try to make some kind of decision. Okay, now on this other thing, they said he was going through it with the CEO. CEO got, need to be in the office, giving us some money. That, that's what I see. And we need somebody out here. What happened to, I thought we pulled, that, that when I meet, didn't y'all, what happened to that deal? About the, the young lady, what pulled it?
Oh, that's on my report, uh, uh, that's the next item, but I wasn't gonna bring it up now, because I wanted Fonda to get back to work. I just wanted Fonda to be aware of this, of the whole tipping fee, uh, item. So, to answer that question, Commissioner, yeah, you got, you got opportunity to make a decision on that here as soon as I do my report later on in the meeting.
Okay. Well, I mean, we need to make some decision, cause.
If, if, if I may, let me, let me say one thing, I want everybody, I want everyone to understand what the problem was. So, a, a lot of it just came recently, I've been made aware of what's been going on. So apparently, and Keith, you, you correct me when I'm wrong. Apparently, this was the number one, this was a, this plan, this total, uh, this new roof project was what was first, uh, recommended to the hospital, uh, right after the storm, correct?
Yes, sir.
If you remember at one point, the C, the CEO came to you and said to you, he thought it was better that if we just patched the roof and use the rest of that money towards the, uh, new facility, well, the problem is, that's not a good plan for the insurance company. And so we've been going back and forth with this here for some time. And then now, we started a project, they, they had it where it's zoned. Luckily, luckily enough, Keith was able to get this modular building in here to make the project go by faster, cause my concern is, Commissioners, we don't even need a name stall. I mean, y'all are bored and raised here, you know, sometimes during the summer, we have a rainy week that can cause havoc here in this county. That's what worries me, that they're in the middle of a project, cause the way the CEO wanted to do it is by zones. Like they fix one part of the roof and then everybody moves around, then they start back again, fix another part of the roof, and I, I think it was like six zones?
Yes, sir.
That's what they wanted. To me, that was a bad, I, I don't agree with that idea, because again, we could get caught with the roof in the middle of a project with a two or three straight rainy days and that would cause ultimate confusion out there to the hospitals, as far as I'm concerned. So, finally, we're to the point now where we're, well, let me ask, are we to the point where we're using this modular building now? Is everybody, when I say everybody, not AKA, but is everybody else on the same page that we're using this and we're moving forward?
After last night's conversation with, uh, the CEO, yes, sir.
Okay, so after last night, we're on the same page. So now, now finally, we can get to AKA, which we, Mr. Chairman, like you said, should've been done a long time ago. I agree with you. So that's where we are right, right now. But I just wanted to make sure you guys understand, understand the history of this project, and you're right, it should've been done a long time ago.
And that was mentioned to the CEO when first, uh, brought up the subject of a temporary facility, which was probably two months ago now?
Yeah. Cause, uh, Aaron and I attended a meeting with Keith and, and hospital sta- uh, the staff, administrative staff, where we talked about it. We left the meeting with the understanding that they created a hybrid system that they needed to tweak. The next week, I got an email saying, no, we don't wanna use it at all.
Well, see, that's what I'm talking about, it's like this, the CEO, he good at what he do, and that's his numbers. I don't expect the CEO to be in the, in the building department. Somebody else should be, I mean, that's my thought, somebody who do that department. I mean, you know, he, it's, it's alright for him to be involved, cause he the CEO, but, and then that's taking some off his plate, so he can get our money out there. That's what we hired him for, you know, just to run the hospital and get money and then keep it going, keep, uh, but, but, there's no way, well, let me ask you a question. How it just gonna interfere, it got to be, if a storm come up and we ain't fixed the roof, what happen, what happen in that case?
If a storm comes up and we haven't fixed the roof, you're gonna end up with more interior damage, uh, damages which may exceed the current coverage limits of the building. Um, you could end up with, if you got patients in there that could be negatively affected by patients, uh, by the storm, you got equipment that could be negatively affected. So fixing the roof is in the best interest, instead of trying to patch it.
I, I mean, you got all that, you got high-tech stuff out there, low-tech, high-tech, I don't know what you got there. But I do know, why is you fixing the inside of building and it leaking? That, that, that don't make no sense. Do that, I, I, I can't go along with that. You got the water coming in. What they gonna do, hold a cup up there a whole of it? No.
Let me-
Glad you're the board.
Uh, I'm on, I'm gonna make a motion that we proceed with the, uh, modular unit. And, and based on the health, safety and welfare of, of what's going on out there and this roof needs to be repaired, should've been repaired back in January, three months after the storm. Here we are in July now, and we still don't have the roof fixed. And based on the recommendations of the, uh, insurance carrier here, that he's ready to proceed and move forward and fix that building. Contingent upon the attorney's, uh, comments of AKA approval and we don't lose our critical access, uh, certificate, which we so desperately need. I'm gonna make a motion to proceed, let's get the roof fixed and, and get facility back to where it should be.
Second, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanna emphasize the importance of using skilled professional skills like you have, Keith. Uh, I, I feel like you can guide this whole process of getting this roof, uh, repaired. And, uh, I would hope that you would consider the priority area of the roof that is the worst damaging of the interior of the building. Like that room I walked in on Saturday morning and saw where they had taken, uh, visqueen and made a funnel out of it.
Yes, sir.
You know, that, and so prioritize your project in that regard, and I just would want to emphasize how important it is for you to be in command and control of this thing.
Yes, sir.
Well, see, that go back to us.
Mm-hmm.
We need somebody here.
I think you'll find that to happen soon.
Yeah, we need somebody here that we can, that will be working with, contract, you the contractor, the insurance or what?
Uh, the insurance provider.
Yeah, we need somebody who know, they for, that, working with this man at, at the contracts and the, I mean, go ahead.
Keith, would you be able to brief the board just on the things that we discussed during the, um, the bid award meeting? Uh, basically like the product being Sarnaphil and the warranty, and then also the slight slope being on a, a flat roof prior to bring it up to code? Cause I think that would be something, you know, good to make the board aware of.
Yes, ma'am. So, when I sent this out to, to bid, we were very specific, which would help eliminate roofing contractors that think they can do flat roofs to the roofing contractors that we know can do flat roofs. Um, a couple of things is, we want that to be to current code, which it wasn't prior to the storm. So in our specs, we had it all, so it's gonna come up to current code. Um, the roofing contractor that we chose uses a product called Sarnaphil, which has a long history with doing roofs on medical facilities. It has a, um, twenty-year, no-dollar limit warranty to the, um, actual product, as long as it's installed by a certified installer, which, uh, CFS Roofing is. And then CFS Roofing has a five-year labor warranty to the roofing membrane. So that's, which is, that's all pretty much standard with your flat roofs. The insulation, we're gonna be bringing up the insulation to current code, so the hospital should be more efficient in its use of HVAC system when we're done with the roof. And it will have, as Aaron mentioned, the slope, we're gonna put an eighth inch over a foot slope on it, so that water will drain off the roof instead of pooling on top of the roof like it currently is.
That's quite a slope.
Well, let me ask you a question. Oh, I guess, so the insurance company, you with the insurance company, so what I'm hearing is, when y'all, when, when this work get done, y'all, y'all take care of all the bills?
Yes, sir.
Make sure, we won't owe nothing, right?
Uh, you'll owe the deductible.
Deduct, I mean, once we pay the deductible, we, y'all, y'all pay all the other people.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and then y'all is responsible, somehow y'all responsible?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Noah, the, um, the hospital is currently insured for three million dollars. We do have a five percent windstorm deductible, so that our deductible on getting a new roof is gonna be one hundred fifty thousand dollars. However, FEMA will actually help us with the deductible, so the actual cost of the county for the new roof at the hospital is gonna be eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, uh, which is amazing.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, what, what's not amazing is not on it.
Yeah.
This man, tell him to stay in the office.
Just so you know, your insurance, we provide a, uh, turnkey recovery program, which is Synergy manages, and that's the construction side of the insurance, and that's the side that I'm on. So I'm one of the senior project managers with Synergy under FMIT, so that's part of your insurance, uh, plan that you're already paying for.
So if we had somebody working with us, that working with you, not the CEO, goes, numbers don't drive nails, they paper nails.
Right.
That, that, that what I learned. So, we need, we need a, we need somebody working with these people to get this thing on.
And not, I, I'm sorry.
This should've been done.
I'm, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, not, not to, if I keep Fonda here much longer, he's gonna charge me overtime, so, um, but, one more thing, Keith. Could you explain exactly where the modular home is gonna be?
Yes, that's all I was gonna ask.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
In, in relations to access to the building, when they need it, could you give them a quick?
So if you're facing the building, uh, from the, the half-circle drive, it's gonna be to the right or the east side of the building, where the current patient wing is at. We'll have that set up there, and then there will be access to that patient wing. We're gonna isolate that wing, so that they can move their lab into one of those rooms, which will, there's some things with their lab that they have to go through, uh, recalibrations, which is a lengthy process if they move it outside the building. So in order to not have those delays, we're gonna keep it in the building, we're gonna isolate that east wing, do everything else, and then come back and do the east wing last. That'll also allow for them to use those patient rooms if they need to. We're gonna build a cover walkway between the temporary facility and the hospital, so that when you're going back and forth, you're not exposed to the weather. And then the, uh, we're gonna have a food kitchen trailer out there for the kitchen staff to use, which is gonna be on the east side of the temporary facility or either on the north side. We're gonna go out there this afternoon and do some measurements and see where it's gonna be the best fit for it.
Okay, and medical records will be, will stay in, but will be protected.
Yes.
Throughout the entire project.
Correct.
Now, what kinda, when cold, they can, this can withstand, them building with y'all, temp, them temp building?
What kinda wind code, is that your question? They are built for the, uh, current wind load codes for this region, and then they're, the way that they get strapped down, they'll, they use four-foot ground rods that drive into the ground and then get strapped down.
So that's class three, that's class three.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Cole?
Yeah, the emergency room, I was gonna ask him, how will the emergency room work? Will there be a separate ambulance entrance, how, how?
There is a separate ambulance entrance that we've got built into the plan, that, so that, there's a front entrance to this temporary facility, which is gonna face the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
And then on the back left corner, there is another door that we're gonna use for ambulance entry, and they'll, they'll have a straight shot down a hallway into the emergency room portion of this facility.
Okay. And we will take signage into consideration, Commissioner, that's something, it's just a given.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, so, the picture here is, is that we're renting a modular facility that's essentially a functional shell, and our job is to fill it with our equipment and everything and our people, while then, you're really penetrating the old hospital roof to get it all properly fixed from bottom up.
Yes, sir.
That's what that picture looks like.
Yes, sir.
I see.
So when we pull the substrate off of the, the current roof, you're going, the interior of the hospital is gonna be open to the environment?
Sure, and that's why we need the safety.
Yes, sir.
Do we know how much that modular unit's gonna rent for?
That's on their ticket, not ours.
Oh, really, you're gonna do that?
That's all my calls.
Yeah, that's turnkey recovery for you.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that ain't gonna take nothing away from the top.
No, sir.
Okay.
There's two different parts to your policy, there's the, uh, schedule limit- There's two different parts of your policy. There's the, uh, schedule limit portion, which is directly to the building, and then you have extra, uh, expense endorsement. And so this temp, and that's stuff that I need to spend money on in order to make repairs. So the temporary facility falls underneath that extra expense endorsement.
Sound like y'all done it before.
Couple times.
Good.
All right, y'all ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Oh, no, no, the voting, uh, moving forward. This is your turn.
Okay. I guess, well, when, 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 when AKA says okay, they can go on the work.
Yeah, that, that was a motion made, contingent upon get those two approvals.
Um, what else?
And actually, one thing while Fonda's still here is, um, actually, the insurance company through the turnkey recovery program will also be, uh, making some repairs to Fonda's recycling building. So that's something that's gonna be accomplished eventually, although the hospital is first and foremost.
Okay.
Yeah, just the corrections on, on, uh, Commissioner Jones, say double A is in Sabrina, that is correct. It's triple A and ozone will travel to Liberty, so double A is in Sabrina, and that's it.
All right. Y'all, anybody got anything else for Mr. Davis? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, officer.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Pam Bania, President of Management.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, I actually have two action items this morning for the Commissioners. The first one being, um, request the board approval and signing of the IPAS MOU. And IPAS stands for Integrated Public, um, Warning System. That's the federal system, the system that you scroll, you see scroll across your TV, takes over your airways. Um, like when we had Irma, had someone calling, wanted me to stop scrolling across their screen. Well, that wasn't me, but it will be now. When we put out an evacuation notice, it will come across the television. It will take over your norwether radio stations. It will also take over, um, your radio stations, your TV stations. So, um, we've taken all the classes. All, all this means is, you know, it doesn't cost the county anything. We just have to agree that we have to abide by their rules, which I've read, and we take, like I said, I've taken the classes twice, my office has, so... Um, I just need a board approval of y'all signing that MOU with them so we can get that in place.
Pass it to the board, somebody?
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
All right, uh, second request is the board approval and signing of the 2019-2020 Emergency Management Preparedness and Assistance, our EMPA grant in the amount of, uh, one thousand five eight hundred and six dollars. Hasn't changed.
I got a motion on the floor by, by Commissioner Masser.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
I'm just gonna leave these with him and I'll come back and hold them up. Just make sure we sign it. Okay, okay. And that's, that's all that I have for y'all.
Anybody got anything for, um?
Chairman, I got, I got a question from Ms. Pam.
Go ahead.
Ms. Pam, have, have we heard anything yet about, well, I think we discussed it last board meeting about the Verizon, uh, thing with the, for the EOC? Michael, wasn't that for the EOC?
Yes.
The Verizon thing from the last meeting?
Yes. Uh, you wanna update us to where?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm an error. So, um, everything else is approved, we got it from our end. What we did is sent it, uh, attorney Schuler, WIS, and Mark, they both at the same time, sent it to the airport engineer, AFCON, and they were reviewing it, and they are in contact with each other to make sure they've got the FAA, there has to be a clearance waiver. Even if the tower's below, FAA still needs to look at the plans, and that's what we're waiting for. So based on that, I told them they can proceed, uh, once they got the FAA clearance. So where we are, have they started yet? Uh, I don't know. I can find out today. And in addition to that, Commissioner, what I also asked them to look at, and this is a tower company itself that represents Verizon, to look at doing the same thing at the Sheriff's Department. Um, and she said, as soon as she gets this project started, then she'll look at the Sheriff's Department and see if Verizon would approve that, and then they'll go ahead and do it there too. So you'll have two locations with additional capacity and additional, uh, coverage in case of a storm.
The only reason I ask, I know at the last meeting, we were, I think we were pretty much all in agreement that we wanted to try to do as quick as we could.
Oh, yes.
That's why I said.
And they have. I mean, attorney Schuler and Mark, they reviewed everything, sent it right away. We sent it to AFCON, and I told AFCON how quickly you want this done.
Okay.
So they're working with them to get that FAA approval for the-
Okay.
The landing zone, is that what they call it? Whatever. So, yeah, but that's what they, that's what they are. I guess I should ask Gordon. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else got anything for Ms. Bania?
Just two things. Um, Pam, do we have any update on, uh, resolving the issue of the electrical wiring that allegedly was damaged right on Miller Street in Lanark Village, right by the Pearl Restaurant? Uh, the owner feels that it was done by one of our contractors, and do we have a conclusion on that?
We don't, we don't know who the owner is for us to contact and figure out, was it done on the side of the road or the front of the road? Cause if it was done on, if it was done on ninety-eight, that's the state of Florida.
Okay, I understand.
So I need the information, only owner, to find out it, and if he's talking about a sign, that's sitting right out there on ninety-eight, right at the corner.
Yep. He, it's electric was supplied to the sign, apparently. It is not functioning since the storm. And he was concerned that it might've been damaged in the process of debris click pickup.
Okay, I need the owner's contact information, and I'd like to go out there and look at it.
I'll do it. Yes, ma'am. I'll do that. And the other-
With that, I'll send it to Benny after that, if you know what you find out.
Yeah, I mean, I need to look whether it's on ninety-eight or it, it was on the side of the road. And then again, all our stuff is GPS, uh, Commissioner, so I can tell you where the county's debris contractor picked up from that corner where he says something was damaged, cause we can find that out really quick.
Okay. And then, Michael, can you clarify, um, with regard to the tower situations that we're talking about? Is there any consideration that, that we still need to mitigate the crossover talk that we get in FireNet? And that, I know we got our FCC licenses up to date, and there, that gave us a pathway for filing a complaint that the, on the receiving end of the transmissions during fire issues and other issues?
Yes, sir.
It's garbled, and there's overtalk.
Yes.
And, and, and do we have that pathway to clear that up?
Yes, actually, Williams Communication was able to narrow down exactly where the, uh, the crossover was coming from. They've been in contact with that, it's a rescue.
Okay.
Maybe I think out of, I think he told me out of Georgia, Alabama, I wasn't sure what he says. But yes, they were trying to do that before we file a formal complaint with the FCC.
Yes.
If we could avoid getting the federal government involved, we would prefer to do that where they can work it out themselves.
Okay.
But if not, we would. I, I'll check with Williams Communication on that, uh, for you and give you an, email you the update, okay?
And then a follow-up to that, the FireNet has their signal antennas attached to the sheriff's tower right now, as I understand it. And it's the only service there right now. Is that a correct statement?
Attached, I think it's a separate tower at the moment.
Is it? I see.
Yes.
I just was wondering that the dysfunction or not of that tower right in the middle of the sheriff's property, should it be considered, is it useful, or if not, should it be considered to be dismantled? When we remembered, Williams Communication last winter felt that it was non-climbable, and they couldn't service it.
Yes. Well, where we're at with that, Commissioner, is that we're looking, before we decide what we're gonna do at the Sheriff's Department location, we're looking for alternate site. There, uh, there are two additional towers in East Point, and then one at W O Y S. So Williams is working with the owners of that to see where we can get the best deal. And we're gonna present that to the Board of County Commissions, and you guys decide if that's a contract you're willing to enter into.
Okay.
And with that, then we'll decide about, uh, removing the tower at the Sheriff's Department. Because what we cannot afford to do is, um, is continue to have lightning strikes in that, is it half a million Commissioners that we paid for the-
That new console?
Console, yeah. So that's what we have to, and, and Williams told me there is no way them or any other tower company could tell you that they've to, having a tower there with the way it's connected, they can totally separate it so there's no more lightning strikes. That comes, they can't give you that guarantee.
That's why we need to pursue.
Yeah, so that's why an alternate site in East, East Point would be better.
Okay.
So, yeah. That's what we're about.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Question for Pam. Would, Ms. Pam, while you're looking into information on the signage over at the restaurant that Commissioner Bolt was referring to, let's determine if it was in the right of way of the county or the state, and if it was in the county right of way, was there a building permit issued? I think that's pertinent information.
Anybody else got anything? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Pam.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Eric Lovestrang. His extension office, Eric.
Good morning, Commissioners. I had a very short written report and no items that required board action today. So unless you have some questions for me, I'll get us back on time.
Anybody got a question? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
If you would, Commissioners, the next two people are from ARPC. I need to set up the projector and their laptop. Would you give me five if you would?
All right, I'll take five minutes, please.